Welcome everyone to this August meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We ask, we may ask you questions for more clarity or more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase, please also come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. So, let's begin with the roll call.
Doones.
Here.
Nightingale.
Hanley.
Here.
Bryant.
President.
Nash.
Doan.
Here.
Zawurko.
Here.
Brayley. We do have it for him.
Very good. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the June meeting. We did not have a July meeting, so that was our June 26 meeting. Minutes you have seen and looked over, I trust. Are there any changes to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So moved. Support. And moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have just one item on our printed agenda tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda from anyone, anything? If not, no changes, we'll proceed with our first item of new business, case J-180026, site plan review for a vascular clinic on North Michigan. People here are to present. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Bell. I'm with Lapham Associates. We're the engineering, surveying engineering planning firm that put together the proposed site plan for this proposed vascular clinic. I apologize that we had a transformer blow up and I didn't have power at my office all day, so I don't have any big fancy colored pictures to present you, but you should have a small copy of the site plans in your packet, I believe. We have two or four existing lots that are just outside of, across the river here, that we are proposing to construct a vascular clinic. I don't have, I can't read the site plan that I have. It's small, but there's some square footage. We meet the requirements for the number of parking. We positioned that building. The building is modeled after several other clinics that are being built in other communities across the area, the region. So we want these buildings to be uniform, look the same. They provide a certain number of lobby for a certain number of people. There's some exam rooms and offices that are located in this building as well. So that building has a specific footprint that fits onto these lots, although we have very tight constraints with these lots. We are one of the first people that are coming to you, I think, with the new form-based zoning ordinance that you have. We've done our best to try and conform with that ordinance with what we have and making it work for the site. We went through our engineering review. I believe we have most all of our items addressed. There is some concerns with some drainage on a retaining wall, some details on that that I'll have to work out with the engineering department. Again, I didn't have internet all day today. I wasn't able to respond back to the city to get that back to them. But we do have water and sewer that are right available on the road that will tie into this building to provide us with our portable water. We don't require fire suppression, so we don't need that, but we do have our sanitary sewer line that will tie in, as well as some storm sewer. We provide a small basin out in the front area that'd be a shallow basin, manageable slope, so it would be maintained only in the event of a flood, would it hold water? We've got a French drain that will make sure that there's no standing water left in there, and we have restricted flows from an outlet structure, so in the event of a large rain, where we do have a 100-year flood or a 50-year flood, that that water's accommodated and taken care of. We do have, the rear of that backs up against the railroad track and drops off quite a bit down in that area, so we do have the back of the site that drops off to our natural terrain that's there, and there's some bushes and shrubs that will remain to kind of buffer from the railroad tracks as well. I believe we had, all the planning comments came back. We had some issues with the number of parking spaces, and I think we've accommodated that to put 18 parking spaces in there, so I calculated 17, but your city planner had come up with 18, so we accommodated that. We are putting in one single new entrance that would be out in the front, spaced an appropriate distance for that speed limit from where, right at the corner where there's a stoplight there, so we've positioned that new entrance drive to the back. And one of the main things is we have, traffic circulation is a concern for us. A lot of elderly people, people with health problems, with vision problems, that we like wide lanes and large curves, as well as for fire and emergency vehicles. That makes the site better that way, but we've laid our site out so that we have a good traffic circulation, the way we believe it fits best with this site and fits in with the neighborhood as well for the medical services. So, on that note, I think I'm open to any questions you may have. We also have the developer, Emily is here, she can answer any questions you might have with the business, day-to-day operations, some of the patients and requirements that they might have as far as why we developed the site the way we did. So, if there's any questions?
I think the only illustration we have so far is showing the building parallel to Michigan, not turned.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are we going to be able to see that at some point?
Well, this is a plan that they want approved, is one that's before you.
Okay.
We do have, we've looked at an alternative, because we realize that we have, one of the requirements in your ordinance is, I think, the number of, the percentage of the parking cannot be in front of the building, and that didn't fit real well with what we need there. We had put together a packet that, the doctor has put together, Dr. Hakani, that explains some of the ins and outs and why we feel it's more suitable for what he's doing with the configuration that we have. We did look at a possible turning the building 90 degrees. However, it doesn't, it's not really conducive to the traffic flow. It makes it very difficult for vehicles to get in and out and turn around and exit, just because of the constraints of the lot, the width of the lot. I'm not sure if we have enough of those, we can hand those out so that...
Yeah.
So, these were just together today, actually, so, but it does give you an example of what we possibly could look at, but it also explains why we do not feel that that's the most desirable possibility for this particular site. But obviously, we would like the plan as presented, is what we brought before you to get your feedback on and get an approval for. Do you want to go through that?
Yes, sure.
Okay, well, I'm going to have Emily go through that to explain to you what's in that packet with a little more detail.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Emily Hakani. I'm Dr. Hakani's wife. I'm also the CEO of Vascular Health Clinics, and I deal with a lot of the day-to-day clinical practice with our patients as well. So, he did mean to be here. He actually was in the middle of surgery. I think he's on his way over here right now, so you will get to speak with him, but I'll just get started on this. The first page here in our presentation just kind of shows what our buildings look like. We do like all of our buildings to be really consistent. We believe in really modern, sleek facilities that do allow for ease of access to our patients. One of the things that you'll notice is there are a lot of windows on our facility. So, a lot of what we're looking at here too, from our proposed plan, is privacy and really looking at ways to maintain and ensure that. The desired site plan, you've already seen that there, as well as, you know, the site plan that you have proposed. I think one of the things when you guys are looking at this that I'd really like you to keep in consideration is the fact that, you know, we, this is a medical space. This is not a plaza or a strip mall. This is where we have patients coming in, so ease of access and easy parking and ways to kind of decrease congestion is a huge, huge priority here. So, our goals really are to provide cardiovascular and wound care services to the Saginaw community as a, an organization. That is our goal overall. We are within the mid-Michigan region, and we really try to bring vascular services locally to patients within their community, so that they don't have to travel so far to a tertiary center to have the same kind of treatment. So having the ability to do that in your community is huge. We service a lot of the rural territories surrounding you, and having the ability to have those patients come closer to home is so convenient for them. Also, ease of access to our facility with safety and privacy of our patients as a priority, as well as really promoting beautification of the area. We are replacing two buildings that are older in nature, and we're replacing them with a very well-maintained, modern clinical space. Just kind of some of our concerns. Number one is privacy, and we really want to do everything that we can to protect patient exposure and privacy, so that is why our plan really focuses on the side that has all of the windows facing a wooded area versus a parking lot where there's a lot of people going by. It's by a noisy street. Really want to try to minimize that and protect patient exposure. You may or may not be familiar with HIPAA, so the Health Information, Portability and Accountability Act, that really protects all of our health information as well, you know, that could be verbal, it could be written, it could be oral. So we really want to do everything that we can to protect patients in that standpoint. The second point here is access. You know, we have a lot of patients that come from nursing homes. They come in large vans or buses. We also have dial-a-ride comes and drops off patients, because a lot of them have transportation issues, and so there needs to be the ability for those large vehicles to come in and come out. You know, a lot of times they're unloading stretchers, they're unloading wheelchairs, and it can be congested in front of a building if there isn't accurate, adequate spacing around that. Additionally, you know, we do some procedures in these facilities, and these patients are very sick. If an emergency were to happen, we need to have an ambulance that can come right in there and take that patient out, which is a huge concern if there's a lot of congestion in the front of that building. So having adequate spacing for parking and having those vehicles coming in and out is huge. Additionally, you know, a lot of our patients, they're very elderly. They have very poor mobility issues. They have poor vision, poor reaction time, and so it can be difficult for them to complete a three-point turn. If they don't have a lot of space, it can result in accidents. And again, you know, the congestion in front of the building is a huge thing. If you're having patients that are, or the families that are dropping patients off, it's kind of the same thing. So our site plan really allows for ease of mobility for these larger vehicles, as well as emergency vehicles, because as you know, delay in patient care can mean the death of a patient, which obviously is huge. The final point here is just visibility. Again, we have a lot of elderly patients. If they are struggling to see our signage from the street, you know, they may miss the location entirely. Where we plan to have our signage is right on the front of our building, as well as at the road. In our proposed site plan, in the site plan that you have proposed, it's going to make it very difficult. There will be no signage that they can see from all angles of the road. As well as the fact that, you know, a lot of these patients, they may not be familiar with the Saginaw area. Again, they're coming from rural territories. I will say even patients that come to the Midland office, if they struggle to find it for whatever reason, many times they just give up, and they're like, "I can't find it. I'm just not coming. I'm not doing this. I'm going to stay home." So, these patients are very sick. They need this care. We can't delay this care whatsoever. You know, these are patients that are at risk of losing their leg, they're at risk of having a stroke, they're at risk of their aneurysm rupturing. We need to really make priority of their care, you know, vital here. So, that's a huge thing as well, is just making it so that they can see our building clearly. And also, again, the final point is just the mobility issue and the vision, making it easy for them to just be able to see where they're going, turn in and turn around. And the final point here is, I know you guys had proposed the alternative L-shaped building. Again, this is, we're having the same issues with privacy, access, invisibility, and congestion in front of the building with that same proposed plan. Our buildings are all uniform and the same, as Scott pointed out, so we have the same workflow for all of our facilities. We'd really like to maintain that and keep that, and it really is the ideal option to maintain their privacy, access, and visibility. Also, it's more cost-effective. The L shape will actually incur more cost because of the L in itself, it's going to be more space that needs to be added to the building. So, those are, those are the primary points that we really wanted to bring to your attention. If you have any questions for me.
Could you go over those first two points again, that this proposal we have made does not protect patient exposure and privacy and HIPAA? I wasn't clear on that.
Yes. So, if you look at the two site plans that are there before you, the one that we have proposed and the one that you have proposed, and the one that we have, the entire back of this building and the front of the building is lined with windows. Just keep that in mind. Granted, there are shades on these windows. It's not like they're wide open or anything like that, but I don't know if you've ever had a procedure in an office or anything like that, any of you, but I think just from a comfort standpoint and an anxiety standpoint, you know, you would feel better if you knew that you weren't facing a busy, noisy road while you're having your procedure versus an area where it's wooded and there isn't as much noise. So I think from that standpoint, just a privacy standpoint, that's a huge thing. You know, with HIPAA, I don't know, again, if you're familiar with that, but there are a lot of ways now, from a construction standpoint, they're looking to protect people from a HIPAA standpoint. So that could be with, again, obstruction, so putting up, you know, ways for patients not to be seen, ways to soundproof, which we do those types of things within our building, but, you know, trying to eliminate that as much as possible, to avoid having it facing directly a street or a parking lot would really help decrease the risk of exposure. And I do have Dr. Hakani here, who is going to take over for me, so.
Hi, council members. Sorry, my name is Omar Hakani, vascular surgeon. Sorry for the delay, but here at Covenant, we did our very first emergency thoracic aneurysm repair, what I just finished right now, and it's a brand-new service in the history of Covenant. It was never done, and we just did it today successfully. These are the types of services that we plan on bringing to this community, one which is not available at the moment. We cover a very large territory from the thumb all the way west to Almont, west of Almont Lake, all the way north to Holton Lake, and south down to Freeland and Grand Blanc. These services are very important for the area and the hospital. The hospital is very intent to try to build a heart and vascular with modern-day technologies, and we really want to have those patients seen locally within the community, and we hope that we can do this project. I know that, I've read everything, or actually wrote all of this, or I was going to present it, but, you know, I think that the goal for us is to try to maintain some privacy to the patients. Having the windows there by a road, by a parking lot does make them feel uncomfortable. We had that issue in Gladwin, and we hear about it all the time. It makes patients feel pretty uncomfortable. I'm very understanding of the new ordinance to try to maintain some type of riverfront type of utilization. I think this is a little bit different because it's a medical space. We do do procedures there. We do do endovascular procedures. It'd be nice for patients don't have to hear the road and the activity there, and I think that the proposal that we had is something that would be best fitted for that, and we would appreciate your consideration and being able to help us make that a reality.
One of your objections to the proposed plan is that it would not allow large vans and buses to turn around. How exactly is there a difference for that situation in either plan?
Sure.
It seems like...
So, the, one of the things that happens, whether we have clinic or whether we have patients being brought in through EMS or through nursing homes or just local dial-a-ride programs, they come in with large vans or large trucks, and usually they drop the patients off, or they'll park to the side, they'll be able to get the stretchers off, bring the patients in, and it's a whole process. It takes them about 30 minutes to do so. If they come from a nursing home, they need to be parked there for hours until the procedure is completed or the clinic visit's completed. When you look at the, any plan, whether it be an L or orthogonal to the road, you really only have one way in, and it's the same way out. There's no way to really go in there and turn around and come out unless you did a three-point turn. And in the proposed site that we have, if you look at it, the, it's, you can go as a roundabout. You can go in, you can turn around, you can just continue going straight and kind of exit without having to block the entrance for other cars coming in. So that's the difference.
Well, I didn't see that.
So if you look at the desired site plan, when you walk in, for instance, or when you drive in, you have the two islands in the middle, and you have two rows of parking, and for instance, if there was a van that was to come in, they'd come in and they'd go all the way down close to the front door, they'd be able to park, or they'd be able to stop, and then continue turning around and exit if need be. But if you look at the orthogonal plan, you can't do that. You'd have to stop there, and if you have cars coming back, there's not enough room to go beyond. They'd have to park in something if there's not enough parking. I don't know how that would work.
Are there other questions?
I have a question, staff.
Yes.
With the, with the new ordinance, I notice, this is 153.460, it talks about building placement and location. That commercial buildings typically have consistent orientation towards primary streets and shallow front setbacks with parking at the rear or side of the building. So, am I correct that this proposed site plan does not meet the goals of that, of the new ordinance?
Right, because, you know, as in the ordinance, the Riverfront District was divided into six sub-districts. This one happens to be in the Riverfront Commercial District, which allows, parking-wise, for 10% of the lot area to be in between the building and the street. 10% comes out to about 2,850 square feet roughly, and that's enough for about nine cars. They could be in that area, in that 10%. The way that this is designed, 100% of the parking is in between the building and the street. Now, this plan, the non-ideal plan that is submitted here, is one that was drawn up by them. I put together one that shows two 26-foot aisleways that where the people could pull in, drive down, come around and come back. The parking would be between those two aisleways, so the people could pull in and then pull straight out without backing up at all, and there is room to do that, actually. It gives them about two feet more of setback area for the side setbacks than what the current plan shows.
So, the issue of that the buildings be, have shallow front setbacks, this one is just the opposite. Has a very, I mean, the building's in the back of the lot.
And that's somewhat described in the Riverfront Commercial. It gives more of a setback in the front than the other districts do.
I understand that what you normally do, what your configuration is apparently, is what you've shown in this proposed site plan. As an uneducated person, when I looked at it, and I knew what the ordinance said, I thought, "Why not just reverse it? Why not have the building in the front and the parking in the back?" But you're telling me there's, it's not desirable to have the building where you're doing procedures that close to the street?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, these are angiographic procedures, you know, the patients are nervous to begin with. We don't want to be hearing, "It's a busy street on Michigan Avenue." We really want them to feel pretty comfortable, and having it right next to a road, busy road, just be really, really odd and uncomfortable for the patients, I would think.
And with your plan, what do the patients look out on?
Nothing. It's the back, it's the, it's the train tracks, and there's usually, we put a lot of vegetation back there, so they don't see anything. It's just a very private area.
But they wouldn't be looking out the front of the building towards the parking lot?
No. Correct. Correct.
We should be able to look at what you're talking about.
We don't have that.
It's a third alternative.
Well, I didn't, you know, it's not my job to design that they won't look.
Well, this, even if there was that option, I mean, you still have the issue with all the windows being next to a really busy parking lot, and so, I don't know if it's the city, it's, what is it, this, the county health department, there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of parking there, there's a lot of activity there, and you're five feet away from cars parking and windows where patients are changing, being seen by a physician, et cetera. It's really not conducive to delivery of care.
And I think there's other ways to curb that as well. There's other ways with, you spoke earlier about Covenant. I look at their facility on State Street, and what they've done is they've done the shades, which we referenced earlier, and also put some shrubs up, which has kind of helped two things with privacy, but with also the sound barrier.
Yeah, and which makes though, you need more of a setback, you need to move the building more forward, which means less parking. So we kind of put this building with only a five-foot setback from the edge, but I think if you start putting strawberries and things like that, you're getting more space, irrigation, things like that. And then the other things, as was mentioned, is that a lot of these patients, they would want to see some signage, you know, if you're only, you'd really only be able to see it coming one direction, which is coming east off of Michigan, I think it'd be hard if you're coming the other way. So, I think there's some signage issues as well there to be able to kind of get that visualization.
But I don't think the plan that we've submitted would violate HIPAA in any way.
No, it's not. HIPAA, so the health department, or the human health services has requirements in terms of...
Who is it? Say it again.
The HHS, Human Health Services. And I gave you the link on there. You can look into that on page four or five, which basically talks about, HIPAA has multiple things. HIPAA has privacy with electronic information, patient information, as well as privacy with respect to the delivery of care. And so, similar, you wouldn't have a medical practice in a mall type of thing. Those are some of the things. So you have to make sure you have those safeguards in place, so there are requirements and guidelines that we try to follow.
What size vehicles are you guys anticipating coming in? Because there was a reference to like large vehicles. I know Midland County differs greatly from Saginaw County. But I think that our lift cab services and the dial-a-ride services are the same.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a standard 15-passenger vehicle, so it's not that big of a vehicle. We're not going to have a 72-passenger bus coming through. It's like a, it's like a larger van.
Yeah, I think a lot of the, one of the biggest things we deal with is, our patients are pretty sick, and if we do angiographic procedure, one of the things we worry about is bleeding, and it happens pretty routinely. We have to call ambulance service to come pick up a patient. I mean, we have minutes to get them into the hospital, so we can get them in the operating room. In our facility in Midland, we have a particular back area, completely separate entrance for the ambulance to come in. They come in, they quickly load the patient, they bring them out. In any type of configuration, whether it be an L or orthogonal to the street, you find that you'll have, if you have a car that's there that's maybe picking up or dropping somebody off, or looking for parking, I mean, you can't exactly, looking for parking, you'd have to reverse or do a three-point turn and to turn. and try to come back. And if you have an ambulance coming in or trying to come in, I think it'll be really not conducive to being able to get in that space at appropriate time.
And I know the city well enough to know that if there's parking issues, they will come. Because I've gotten tickets here. But, but what I would say is that I don't, I just, I'm just not seeing all of that on that side. I mean, we, we have developed a plan that's kind of, here you go. This is what we're, and I understand. I don't want you to think that we're being difficult.
Yeah.
But I just think some of those things are a little bit, a little bit of a stretch.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And I, you know, talking to the patients, I could tell you, they, one of the locations that we had initially, that, we got a lot of heat from the patients to make because they had to make a left-hand turn. Our patients are all over 70 and up. And they are very, very sensitive to coming to a big city or coming to Saginaw or even too much traffic, making a left turn, even if too much parking, if parking is an issue, they won't come. I mean, we deal with this very often. And it's just unfortunately that for you and me, for you and me, it's not an issue. We'll go and drive anywhere, go anywhere. But our patients tend to be a lot more sensitive to these issues.
Are you talking about the left turn they would make into the property from Michigan?
As an example, is what I said. You know, I don't think it's going to be a problem here, but we looked at other properties where it's been a really busy intersection where there's not a light or something and they have to make a left-hand turn. They just, they won't do it. They won't come. Or if it's too hard to find, or they get lost and they can't find the building or something, they won't come. I mean, we deal with it very often.
But that would be the same no matter how the building is oriented?
Um, if it's actually oriented parallel to the road, then you have signage right on the building. They can see it. They can't miss it. It's pretty evident. If you have it in a perpendicular way, I think signage would be a real big problem.
Based on the signage allowed by ordinance for a building this size, there could be up to 342 square feet of signage for this building.
And could that be either on the building or closer to the street?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions?
I, I just want, one last question about the form-based ordinance. Is there any part of this site plan that is consistent with form-based zoning?
Yes. That, of this site plan, not, not really.
Proposed site plan?
Um, no. There isn't much that is. The only difference for you to take into account, you're right, most of the building should be as close to the street as possible. But the Riverfront Commercial, it says in the description, is more of a suburban style, more to allow drive-throughs, things like that. That's why they're able to set it back further than what they...
So it's not a flat-out violation? It's, there's some wiggle room here?
There is some.
And that's due to the Riverfront overlay to this, correct?
Uh, I, I didn't see anything that would be against the Riverfront. As far as windows go and everything like that, this building is fine as far as what we've required for windows.
Is there a reason why we didn't see elevations when we got our packet?
Um, I, I didn't get those till I sent the packets out. So you, you have them now, right? Yep.
Have there been any updates from engineering?
Well, they've been back and forth several times, meeting the requirements that engineering's putting on them. And I think at this point, they're down to one issue that, and, and that has to do with the retaining wall in the back. So they're, they've been making a lot of progress. I just did not get any feedback from engineering just before this meeting that I could say everything was finalized. But I think the doctor has submitted everything that engineering has required to this point. So it's just a matter of engineering review.
So engineering has been done for the desired site plan?
Right.
Not for the non-ideal site plan?
Right.
Well, we have a difficulty here.
And no matter what you do, it'll have to be contingent on engineering.
I think we have a difficulty because we just spent a lot of time and effort and money designing our new form-based coating. So if we now ignore it, that doesn't say anything good about us, I think.
I don't think we're ignoring it.
No, I think if we can work together in trying to understand our, you know, we're trying to bring care to the area, to be honest. And if this can be made, I know it's the first iteration to consider our project in this type of new ordinance. It's not that we don't respect the ordinance or understand its utility. I think in the healthcare space with this particular location and everything else going on, if we can have your support in being able to do what we'd like to do, I think it'd be best for the community and our patients. That's really all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Doctor. Do we have any other questions or comments? Is it your position that you would not be willing to entertain the orientation of the building with the turnaround ability that Mike described? If there are no further questions or comments, we have public comment. Tom?
Yes. Yes, my name is Tom Mudd, and I'm a resident of Saginaw on the east side on Hoyt Street. And I've been a member of the Saginaw County Hall of Fame for just under 30 years. And I followed Tom McDonald as president of the Saginaw County Hall of Fame in 2001. During that time, James Cook Mills was elected to the Saginaw Hall of Fame, and it was my pride to take his plaque that he had gotten as a result of that over to the Standing Wheelchair Company, which is at 1520, I think that's the address, North Michigan. I took it over there and I talked to the, to the owner of the Standing Wheelchair Company, filled him in on the importance of James Cook Mills to the city of Saginaw and the county of Saginaw, and gave him the plaque to put up within that building at 1520 North Michigan. For those of you who might not know, James Cook Mills was by far the greatest historian of Saginaw County. Nobody even comes close. This is the volume of reprinting of it. Originally, it was two volumes and it was completed in 1918. Practically all of the research for this unbelievable book, almost the Bible of Saginaw, was done while he was a resident of 1520 North Michigan. I also worked to get many of the letters, photographs, and other research materials that were once owned and used by James Cook Mills. And I took those over to the Castle Museum of Saginaw County History. They were well aware of the importance of this particular house because it was a...
Tom, can I interrupt you just a minute? You're speaking about the property that is, that is the one south of the two we're talking about, right?
No. It's next to the Malcolm House, the big Malcolm House.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Okay. Um, where was I? The Castle Museum, as I said, was well aware of the importance of this house. I recently called John Webb, the current executive director, had a talk with him about this. I know it's most likely too late to say, you know, that maybe rather than demolish, paying to demolish this home, that maybe they should move this home to an appropriate site and save it due to the fact that it's, was a home built in the 1890s by Saginaw's most prominent historian. So I'm not here to hug this house. Only reason I'm here is to make sure that you know and they know that when the bulldozer comes in there to take that house down, you're taking down a pretty precious piece of Saginaw County history. James Cook Mills also authored four other books. During that whole time, he had tuberculosis. He was a really a phenomenal, phenomenal person in addition to being a great historian. So it's, would be, it's, it will be sad to see that little bit of Saginaw history go. There are many cities that would have really relished the opportunity to save something like that. And if there's any, I would, would have hoped maybe that the people with the Standing Wheelchair Company would have said, hey, this is an important home. Maybe we should consider not demolishing this but maybe moving it. Maybe the Castle Museum of Saginaw County History could have been a little more aware of what was happening to those two homes. The Malcolm home next door is on the National Register of Historic Places. I know over the years, that's really been degraded. And I did talk to Tom Trombley, the assistant director at the Castle Museum, and asked him if the Castle Museum would be interested in getting some of the architectural details off of the Malcolm home. So we actually had two pretty important homes here that were, and the James Cook Mills home actually looked like it was in very good condition. So, as I say, I'm, I'm not here to delay anything. I'm just want you to know, that's an important piece of Saginaw County history. Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Where would you propose to move these if they were to move?
There's lots of vacant lots in this city.
I know there are.
There's a lot of vacant lots in this city. As a matter of fact, you know, they were even talking for many years, I was involved with Rosemary De Giuseppe over at, there at what they call the Cat Lady's House. They were even talking about moving that. But now it's been purchased and possibly saved if they can actually put in all the money that's going to be required over the course of the year. So it's not the first time. I was also involved in, in saving Saginaw County's oldest home. And having that home moved across the river was really a remarkable move, across the river into Rust Park. And that's been a very successful project. So moving a home is not that difficult. And of course, since you have to pay for demolition costs anyhow, part of that could go to the moving of it. So...
Tom, what's a move cost?
Kushway Home with Kushway Home would be pretty much, of course, that was back, that was back 18 years ago. Then it cost about $8,000 to $10,000 to move the Kushway Home then. I would say it's almost double today, most likely $20,000. I would say $20,000. Larissy House Movers from CoCullen did the original work. They're, they're really good people at this kind of thing. And of course, now you have to decide, once you move it, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to take care of it? What kind of a use could it have? It could be, it could again be a residential house. I mean, I haven't seen the interior since I took the plaque to the home. And I don't know what kind of condition it's in, but it certainly doesn't look like disreputable on the outside.
Is the other home movable? You, it seems like it's pretty bad off, right?
Which, which, oh, no.
Not the Mills home?
The Malcolm home, no. The Malcolm home, I think is, is, has decayed to the point, I think, where it'd be difficult.
You couldn't move it.
You couldn't move it. That's, that's not a movable thing. But James Cook Mills Home would be. We also have pictures of that house being constructed, and I think it was 1894. So again, thank you very much for letting me speak my piece.
Mr. Fallon, do you have anything else to add to our consideration?
I'll just say one thing is, thank you for giving that information. I wasn't aware of a lot of that. But we would be happy to put a plaque or some type of memorial that can identify the history of that site and, for, for residents to come in. Maybe a little park or something where we can, we'd be happy to do that.
How about moving it?
I don't think it'll...
I had to ask.
I don't think it's going to keep up. I've been in that house, actually. I met the gentleman. It's pretty bad shape. Very bad shape.
I just want to follow up on the question that the chair asked about entertaining anything to do with the other plan, the non-desired, the non-ideal site plan that was proposed. So you're just not open to that at all?
It's just, Clint, it's just not going to work, my friend. You know, it's just unfortunate. It's just from the patients' standpoint. I know they're so, they're so finicky, they're so, any little thing, I'm not dealing with it as a doctor. I had, you know, a doctor, you know, a nurse or something, they're so, they're so sensitive. And I just don't think it would be conducive to the care that we need to.
My name is Sean Panasek. I'm with Great Lakes Bay Construction out of Midland. Address is 2525 Northeastman Road. I'm on the City of Midland Planning Commission. And so I can respect what you guys are going through here. I did, I worked with Michael quite a bit when the purchase of this property was going on. And, you know, one thing I like you guys when you're going through writing a new ordinance, and you need to, you need to leave yourself some flexibility here. And I pointed out to Michael that in 153.461, item C, it says, "Building placement and location. Residential buildings typically have consistent moderate front setbacks and consistent orientation. Commercial buildings typically have consistent orientation." It does not say must. So I, I just want to point that out, that I hear, you know, I've heard, man, we're going against what we wrote here. But if you're like us in Midland, you've allowed yourself some flexibility. So, thank you.
And you guys have form-based code, correct?
Yeah. So we're, I mean, we're going through this whole downtown development area, the overlay district, and the same concept, you know, close to the sidewalk, city sidewalks, you know, inviting people to walk. And I, I get that. You know, there's, there's certain types of businesses that benefit from that. But I don't think this type of facility benefits from that biking or pedestrian walking to this type of care. So, just, just my comment. Thank you.
Well, this is my thought. My thought is, is that if this does get approved, that the motion state that this does not set a precedence, because we wouldn't want anybody to come back and say, okay, you did it for them. You just set a precedence. So that, that would be my, my input.
I think that's important because this is the very first time that we've dealt with this, with the ordinance. And we want to make darn sure that this is...
And to try to comply.
Something that opens up the door to say that all this business is just so much because it didn't meet a planner's desire. So we'll just look the other way. I understand the very real reasons why the doctor wants to orient the, the property this way. But let's not forget the ordinance.
And of course, I think we have to consider the possibility that we just may not be able to do this. Maybe although this location is certainly good for what you're proposing, and I'm sure it is a worthy profession and business that we would welcome, it just may be that the property is not one that we can quite see going this directly against what we have just planned. So...
I do have two questions.
Yes.
First question is, do you own the property now?
Yeah. And in talking with, oh, sorry. And speaking, you know, before going down this road, you know, there was other properties that we were looking at. And Mr. Fallon and I, we spoke, and we were given a lot of support and a lot of encouragement to do something within the area with some, they would, that the city would work with us. And that was really refreshing. And that was something that was very positive. And so based on that positive support from the community and the city, we decided to, to do that.
That was how long ago?
Three months, two months, three months ago.
Okay.
I didn't realize a lot of this other stuff. I mean, I know there's this new, new ordinance and things like that. But that was the reason why we went down that road.
I have another. So when this was being done, you guys knew that the ordinance was coming. But, I mean, it's just, it's very cookie cutter to all the other facilities.
Yeah.
And I can understand that. And I can understand that from a cost standpoint as well.
Yeah, yeah, we, when Mr. Fowler and I, we spoke, I spoke, we spoke specifically and the only thing we saw was the issue with setbacks. And we were told, you know, that the city will work with us with setbacks. But the issue of the parking lot being in the front and all the rest, that was kind of news, news, didn't know, didn't know that. Had I known, obviously, you know, things may have been different. But I still would have hoped that the, that the community would support us.
Well, my other question that I wanted to pose is, when's the start? And is six months enough to complete the whole project? Because we normally put a, we want to know a starting date and a completion date.
You know, I myself am booked as a physician into the next year. And it shows you the need, there's a massive need for these patients to be seen in our community. And I've put it on our bill there to be done by December 31st. So, that's...
Of this year?
This year.
Well, we normally typically give six months. And that, just as a standard, so if there's any delays, we don't come knocking on somebody's door like Mike Faust and say, hey, what's going on? There's a building that's not completed yet.
No, we're, we have to, we have to figure this out to be able to take care of these patients. I mean, that's the bottom line. We have a new vascular surgeon coming from Beaumont who is ready. I mean, we just don't have the facilities, I mean, that's the problem. We really need, we really need some facilities.
Any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion on case J180026.
I will submit the motion. My motion is to approve case number, am I on the right case number? Case number 180026 for the new vascular clinic. As stated in their site plan, this is not to set a precedence for any other development similar to this. The start date immediately with the completion date of six months after starting.
Is there support for that? Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Should we have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Good idea, I think.
Brayley?
Support.
Jones?
No.
Hanley?
No.
Bryant?
No.
Don?
No.
Sowrko?
Yes.
Motion fails.
The motion fails? The next item on our agenda is for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? I see no one else. Anything else on our agenda? If not, we are adjourned.